Good afternoon, it's five o'clock. At this time, I'll call the work session for the Perry City Council for Monday, July the fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen to order. We have a quorum. Item three on our agenda is items for review and discussion. Item three A is Community Development Department. Three A one is the parking lot for the city's new passive park off of Country Club Road. Mr. McMorian, I understand that you're gonna handle that for us.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, council? You approach him, council? Oh, got a couple of things for you. First, the slide you see there, screen, that is the design for a park that has Rick Saunders' engineering has done for us. You can see we have the darker shaded area of the parking area is pretty much your phase one of the parking lot. Initially, we're gonna come in off of Country Club Road and then have a smaller parking area for immediately associated with the park. That way, we can get a good understanding how many people are going to be utilizing the park. And if we see that it's getting a lot of use, then we have a phase out, which is a outline of the area in which that parking lot can extend and accommodate more people in the future if we see that it needs some. The pond excavation there, of course, with water quality requirements, the pond has to be in place anytime we add impervious surface. In this particular area, out of ponds already has some drainage problems. One of those drainage problems is the ditch that crosses out of Pond Drive. It's in a flood zone and it is a low area. By creating this water quality pond here, we're solving a couple of problems. One is we're meeting the water quality requirements for the street and the paved parking area. The second one is we are going to detain more water during flooding events, so it would be less negative impact on the neighboring properties just downstream of the pond. And the third thing we're doing is the water hazard that was there on the golf course that goes dry every year. It fills up the water and it goes dry and then there's dead fish. We're gonna incorporate that in some of the water quantity of the water quality pond. So, you can see the shape of the pond incorporates that water hazard and the pond will have a dam that will ultimately be a walking path to the rest of the park. So, in addition to the parking lot and the pond, the excavation of the pond is gonna have a pretty good amount of dirt associated with it. The first portion of that dirt, we're gonna fill in some of the bunkers around the park. And the next portion of dirt, we've looked at the option of a slide mound. And the mound is what you see kind of round over on the right side of the picture. And here are a couple examples of slides, little packs of slides here that would be up there. There's a couple more passing them down, little packs up. So, those slides will be, would kind of sit on top of the dirt field. It would be grass and sloped where it could be landscaped properly. Ansley looked at some of the slopes around the mound to make sure that it could be maintained and mowed properly. And the slide should be beneficial for a good park field as a passive park, but not a destination type park field. Then, if we ever need to use that dirt for something else in the future, we could ultimately repurpose it later if we got time to slide. Any questions coming in?
Yes, sir.
On the, uh, the pond like is, I know it, there is, uh, ain't no spring nowhere to keep it alive, is it?
No, sir. This will not be a wet pond. It will be a detaining pond only, detention pond. So, during rain events, it's gonna get water running. It's gonna hold a little bit of water for a period of time, then when it dries up, it's gonna be dry and it should be able to be mowed and maintained with a lot more.
But we do have a wet pond there.
That's correct.
On up, on in the, or the right end of the park, you do have-
A wet pond, okay.
Or wet lake forever.
It don't, it's gonna stay alive. If you go the way it don't dry up.
It got fairly low this, early this summer, but it did not go dry. Now, the other water hazard that we are incorporating in this pond did go dry and it's got some poor soils under it, so the soils won't contain the water and the water percolates out of the pond through the soils. So, we're trying to accommodate as much improvement as we can with this, this little project.
Can you identify again where you're talking about putting the slides?
Um, if you see the mound up on the-
Right hand side?
The right hand side with the condiment down there. Come right.
Pull that everything-
Yeah, that's it, right there, bitch. Thank you. Oh, that is, uh, that is a mound, a dirt pretty much near the parking lot. The idea there is we don't have to transport the dirt by truckloads, which will save money. The other one is it will be relatively close to the parking lot where the kids could easily get to it, parents watch the children that may be playing there at park. And also, uh, kind of in a good area for the walking path to kind of determine where people want to walk as we move forward with walking trail along the park. Yes, sir.
Will be any benches anywhere along the park?
As of now, they not have any benches in the plan.
Well, folks like me gonna sit down.
I'm sure we need some.
I'm sure.
I wouldn't want to say-
They're incorporated.
What is the, I'm struggling as the purpose of the dirt?
The, the purpose of the dirt is-
If we're on grass.
Is, um, is we don't want to haul it because it's expensive to haul. And if we don't use it, then we've gotta put it-
This is what you're gonna excavate out of the pond?
That's correct.
Okay, I see. So, you don't wanna haul it off and-
That's correct. It's just gonna, it's just a good way, aesthetic way to save the city's money and haul it dirt.
Like Chad said, as we start getting more plans, it's probably gonna be taken and moved someplace else, but at least for right now, it's just a feature.
Well, we have, you know, we have mounds other places in town. Could be called the mound city.
We do. And if, if, if we decide that it needs to be hauled off or spread out, then that is definitely an option.
Okay, I, I understand it now. We'll scroll this afternoon, I'm sorry.
Just talk a bit faster.
Any questions? Mr. McMorian, relative to this.
If, if those are gonna be for kids to play on, the mom's gotta have a place to sit down, okay?
That's very true.
Well, this was awful.
We're being taken care of.
So, do you get plenty of those slides or more slides?
Uh, we're looking at three slides. I think what Ansley was doing was on the slopes, he's got three different sides, one for what age groups you remember?
Like, up to three years and then up to five and then up to twelve. It's like a three foot height, five foot height and then eleven foot height.
Ultimately, the mound would be in a ten to twelve foot.
Any other questions? Mr. McMorian. Mr. Gilmore, what does Mr. McMorian need?
If you all don't have any problems, then I'd recommend you all concur for us to proceed about going to bid with the addition of having some benches.
Everybody ready to move forward to go to bid for this to come back, including benches for the mothers?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I think you have concurrence. Item three B, Department of Labor Services, and three B one is Creekwood and Rosier Park approved. Mr. Gilmore, I understand you're gonna take that.
I am going to attempt to. Yes, sir. Okay. Uh, I think you may have some of this in your package, oh, I'm sorry, but for the general public's benefit and to follow up. Council authorized the installation of two what we refer to as destination playground sites. Those have been installed at Rosier Park and Creekwood Park. Those installations are close to complete. I'm not sure if they have the ADA padding on them yet, but they should be completed fairly quickly. One of the items that came up with that in some discussion is when those parks came in, we had to take out the old swing sets at both of those parks. Which was actually fine because the old swings were not compliant with current requirements that we have, you know, for playground equipment. So, what we're proposing to council today is to authorize a, allowing us to go to bid to replace the swing sets and, everybody say it out loud.
Bid.
Thank you. To go out at the site. Okay, this gives you a general idea of what the swing sets and the benches will look like. I'll start with the bench. As you can see, that's our fairly standard type of bench now. It is metal because we found that it holds up a lot better, has a better covering, you know, paint covering and everything, and that'll be set up around the swing sets. And then you see the swing sets as an example right here. One of the other things we had talked about is with this as well, is the World Foundation has provided some money, which the city is going to match, to provide an ADA accessible, like mentioned, table type of deal. And then for each of these swing sets, one of those swings will be set to accommodate This gives you an idea of what the costs are. See, the arch swings, park bench, engineered wood fiber, which is what goes on the bottom, and then the rubber barriers which go for surrounding the outside of the playground area. The engineered wood fibers do meet ADA requirements, so we'll be compliant on that. As you can see, the total estimated cost comes to ten thousand seven hundred and eighty. This, of course, will be going out to bid. As you can see, see the number of benches, there are eight swings, two, and the basic commodities there. This gives you an idea about the location.
A question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Those benches, you said eight of them, wasn't it?
Yes.
You're gonna anchor them down, aren't you?
Absolutely.
Those are with Calhoun Park now, two nice benches. I've been looking for them to walk several days now.
We'll go up and follow up on that, but all the benches are in a curd down.
Good.
Our shikigami. This gives you an example of where we are with the Rosier Park, just to give you an idea about the layout. Hold on just one second for me here. Just to orient you, this is the drive coming in off of Keith. This is the main parking lot, everybody with me, on Rosier. Okay, this is the area that used to be where we had some of the swing sets and the, like rocking courses and that type of stuff, that's all come out. And this is now the destination playground equipment. You can go up and see it, it's out there right now. This gives an indication of the benches and then the new swing sets will be coming in at this area right here. This shows you Creekwood Park as well, all of which goes back to the general plan that you all had approved. This is either lasser circle right here, this is the parking lot, this is a splash pad in case you weren't familiar with that. This is the pavilion. This is getting hit. Now, this shows the old playground, okay? This gives you the area where the destination playground is. Here's where the new swing sets going in and then kind of back more towards the tree cover and then the location of those four benches up there. Any questions?
What questions do you have, Mr. Gilmore?
No questions, I think is what we need and I think we get exactly what we need.
Right. So, in answer to your next question, Mayor Protem, we would like the authors, our concurrence from the council to proceed to go to bid. Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing too. We're anticipating at this time that this equipment can be installed in-house and that's gonna say, now, it's not gonna be less than ten, I don't think, but it's not gonna as much as if we went out and had it installed.
With no other questions, are you ready to confer with moving forward to taking this to bid for these two parks?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Gilmore, you have a little turn. Move forward. Thank you. Item three C is Department of Administration. Three C one is credit card purchasing card policy revisions. Mr. Worthington?
All right, well, good evening, Mayor Protem and council. I will not be talking about benches or slides or swings or anything that fun. I'll be talking about a great ton of policy. So, in your packets, you will find a proposal for revision to the city's credit card or purchase card policy. Let's see, I think we need to update this policy and there's two main reasons why. The policy is a little antiquated in my mind, so we need to update it to match what the current practice is at the city, but we also need to bring it in line with a modern ideology and terminology with credit cards or purchase cards in city governments. I do wanna mention that the city's purchase policy still is in place. This purchase card policy does not circumvent the purchasing policy by any means. It is simply a way to make payment. All purchase policy must still be in place. Next slide. So, the major revisions, most obvious one is that we're proposing that we change it from a credit card policy to a purchasing or P-card policy. This gets us in line with the state of Georgia's purchase card policy and also is an industry standard. Most cities or counties that you go to, they do not have credit card policies, they have a purchasing card policy. But the more substantial changes that I would like to propose is the who is authorized to have a P-card. Previously, or actually currently, our policy says that each department will have one card and that is in the department head for their designated possession and the whole department can use that. I'm proposing that each department head will still have a credit card, but they, the department head can also request additional cards. That request will be made to the director of administration or day designated and will be approved by the Department of Administration. Any user or person assigned to purchase card will have to sign a purchase card agreement acknowledgement and we'll keep that on file and bolt it to that. Let's see. The goals and opportunities here, really, I think of it from two perspectives, from the user or the department's perspective. What they will get out of this is reduced administrative burden. They won't have to fill out as many public vouchers or spend as much paperwork to get payment made. They can just swipe their card and keep up with their receipt. It also reduces, if we approve as written, it will reduce the risk of reaching the spending limit because right now, we have one card per department. So, we have gotten a couple situations where, that multiple people use that card for multiple large purchases, we can get to a point where that credit limit gets reached and we either have to make payment or either way, it's a burden. It also allows for immediate payment to our vendors, which allows for a quicker receipt of goods. You don't have to wait for us to cut a check on Wednesday, get it to you on Thursday, you take it to the vendor and then they can receive their goods. It also reduces the risk of frozen or closed accounts with our, with say, if Ace Hardware for, for instance, if we were to reach our credit limit with them, they might call us and say, hey, you guys can't make any more purchases until you cut us a check and that takes a long time. That takes a lot of paperwork. And finally, it allows for easier travel reservations. You no longer have to estimate what it'll cost, us cut a check and then when you're done traveling, us go, oh, well, we cut a check for five dollars and they're wrong now and we have to figure out how to correct that now because it's all just on a credit card and you get charged the corrective amount. And from the finance department's perspective, credit cards are a very secure form of payment. Every time we cut a check and send that out to the public in the mail, anybody, not that anybody would, but someone could open up that envelope and there's our account information on the bottom of that check right there. I, I'm not aware of any fraud instances that we've had since I've been here, but I have been places, I have been at places where that does happen, for instance, at the regional commission, and that is just a pain in the butt, a real headache from an administrative perspective. From a finance perspective, this will be less paperwork for us. We're not processing all those public vouchers that come from departments. We get, and we're cutting one check to a single vendor, that's the credit card or P-card administration company. I've already kind of touched on this, it'll be a reduction in corrective or last minute payments. For example, if someone is traveling, we cut them a check for five hundred and twelve dollars to the hotel, they go to check out, it's five hundred and fifteen dollars. We don't have to figure out how to do with that because it's just going on a credit card or a P-card, sorry. Or last minute payments, you know, if someone really needs this payment on a Friday, we cut the checks on Wednesday. How do we get that payment? How do we get a check cut? That's administrative burden. You can just swipe your P-card, assuming that you followed all the correct purchasing policy standards. That's just much easier for everybody. And it'll also potentially lead to less 10-99s under current law. If you pay a vendor with a credit card, it's the credit card processor's responsibility to cut a 10-99 at the end of the year. If we cut the check, it is our responsibility to determine if that vendor needed 10-99 to cut that check. So, I tried to keep it short, but I can answer any questions anybody has.
What questions do you have? Mr. Gilmore, any thoughts or others for this?
I think you definitely need to do it.
Okay. All right. Hearing no questions, are you ready to concur with authorizing and the move forward with this new policy?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
You do not need to go down. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item three D is the police department. Three D one is a discussion of school zone cameras. Ms. Chief Lynn?
Yes, sir. Better put down, council. There's a recent change in Georgia law, in traffic law in particular, that allows speed enforcement in school zones. You might be familiar that at some time in the past, they did it for red lights. They've cut that out and a new change to law. It only applies to school zones and the cameras mounted on school buses, both for the same purpose to reduce speed in school zones and make the children that are going back and forth there safe. And we've got a short video from the company that we're gonna talk to and I think will give you a really good overview. And I've got my resident traffic expert here, Sergeant Nixon, who will say a couple things and then I'll sum it up with a few safety points. So, can we roll the video?
For more than two decades, speeding has been involved in approximately one-third of all motor vehicle fatalities. According to the U.S. Department of Transportation, in 2017, speeding was a contributing factor in twenty-seven percent of all fatal crashes. Speed also affects your ability even when you're driving at the speed limit, but too fast for road conditions, such as when a road is under repair, during bad weather, or in an area at night that isn't well lit. Speeding endangers not only the life of the speeder, but all the people on the road around them. In July 2018, Georgia legislature enacted law to enforce school zone speeds with automated photo enforcement cameras. Specifically, it's a statewide law. School zones are defined as an area within one thousand feet of the boundary of any public or private elementary or secondary schools. Violations are issued for speeds exceeding posted speed limit by ten miles per hour and signs must be posted five hundred feet prior to the camera location. Speed may be enforced only when school is in session and one hour before and one hour after classes. There's a seventy-five dollar fine for the first violation and a one hundred and twenty-five dollar fine for the second and subsequent violations. Non-payment of the fine results in denial of annual motor vehicle registration. And all proceeds of fines must be used to support local policing initiatives, such as body cameras and school resource officers, to name a few. Redspeed Georgia is a turnkey speed photo enforcement provider with over a decade experience in creating and maintaining photo enforcement programs for over eighty communities in four states. Redspeed will help you identify possible camera locations by conducting in-depth speed studies, compile all necessary paperwork for permit applications, purchase, install, and maintain camera equipment, and provide full back office support for the entire violation lifecycle. All services are provided at no cost to your community, paid for by violators exceeding the school zone speed limit. Redspeed's speed cameras can not only enforce speed, they can also provide your police department with enhanced video and license plate recognition capability. Redspeed's turnkey photo enforcement solution improves school zone safety, provides revenue for public safety initiatives, and comes at no cost to the municipality. Redspeed's speed camera technology uses 3D object tracking radar detection, an above-ground, non-invasive detection method with lane-specific identification and speed triggers that record accurate speeds within plus or minus one mile per hour. The radar is powerful enough to simultaneously track up to three hundred and fifty objects in its field of view. In addition to issuing speed violations, comprehensive speed statistics are compiled by the system and can help clients determine if there is a need for additional enforcement. The system performs a daily startup calibration check and will start enforcement only after all checks are passed successfully. Redspeed's speed cameras work in all weather conditions and can be configured to work simultaneously with video surveillance and automatic license plate recognition. Video. The Redspeed system provides both real-time video streaming and forty-five day video archive access via any web-enabled device, PC, smartphone, or tablet. Authorized users can access HD video from any of the overview and lane-specific video camera streams, define the time of interest, and download the video clips directly on their device. No forms, no requests, no delay waiting for a vendor to respond. Lane-specific video cameras are zoomed in to provide clear identification of vehicle features, colors, make, model, and license plate images for all lanes of enforcement. Combination of overview video and lane-specific video allows for crime investigators to not only trace a vehicle through the intersection, but also read its plate. License plate recognition. A license plate recognition module is a real-time license plate identification system with a centralized plate archive across all LPR-enabled cameras that work simultaneously with the speed enforcement system. LPR leverages existing camera photo enforcement hardware and scans all vehicle plates that pass by the lane-specific video camera's field of view. LPR supports real-time amber alert functionality with text or email notifications to individual or groups of authorized recipients. LPR can import existing state and federal hot lists, generate custom hot lists, and export plate archive databases to third-party applications already in use by the customer.
So, due to Sergeant Nixon's expertise from his time with the government's office in highway safety, I've involved him in helping research this and there are a number of companies that offer this, we just have to believe this is the best one and so, without further ado, Brian and Gilmore.
All right. Thank you for your time this afternoon. That's almost like a video that you would see in a sci-fi movie, like the ability to do those things. What we try to do in traffic safety is address the issues of motor vehicle crashes that involve injuries and fatalities. Some of the largest increase over the past three to five years has been vehicle versus pedestrian or bicyclist. It's not just a Georgia trend, it's a trend that's occurred all the way across the country. When I worked, for some of you didn't realize, but for almost three years, I was part-time with Perry and I worked full-time at the governor's office out of the Capitol and as a law enforcement liaison. As part of my responsibilities there, I traveled fifty-seven different counties and we would do a variety of things, whether it be enforcement, but a lot of what we did was education. We were trying to figure out ways to reduce crashes. I will never, you'll never hear me refer to them as an accident, but not an accident, they're a crash. There's a contributing factor. In Georgia, for the past four years, seventy-four to seventy percent of all of our crashes, especially dealing with fatalities and serious injury, has have been a direct result of one of three things. Distracted driving, which is a huge issue, impaired driving, because we still drive impaired, whether it be alcohol or narcotics, and then the last is speed. And most DUIs don't occur with just one thing, they actually have a combination, whether distraction and the speed on top of it. But if I told you that we could prevent seventy-six percent of our fatal crashes by changing drivers' behaviors in one of those three, of those three things, that's a huge number. So, we want, well, this whole process is trying to be like target-driven or data-driven enforcement, so that we can kind of get to the heart of it. One thing I really like about this, when I worked at the governor's office, part of my job was to go to funerals. So, I would go on behalf of the governor's office, especially law enforcement funerals, or I would meet families with mad or different families who lost their child or family member to a motor vehicle crash. And I can promise you this, it doesn't matter the contributing factors, a family loss is a family loss. What I love about this is that it literally is designed to protect the most vulnerable that we have. We know that when people speed in school zones, the likelihood for something horrible to happen exponentially increases because of congestion. That's why we have speed reduction signs in those areas. That's why during certain target times or high congestion times, that travel lane maybe at thirty-five the rest of the day, but in that time, when buses are coming in and out, cars are getting dropped off, and I don't know why, but nowadays, kids don't ride buses as much. When I was little, my mom told me to go on the bus. But now, we got kids, parents are dropping them off, they're pulling them up to the front door. The idea that we've got speeding vehicles going past them is bad enough just vehicles, but when you add speed on top of that, the reaction area time for that- but when you add speed on top of that, the reaction area time for that driver slows way down. One of the things that RedSpeed did for us is that they asked for a list of all of our schools with, within our jurisdiction for Perry. And then they actually conducted a s- a speed study in those schools. So they take and look at an eight-hour period inside of that school and measure the number of violations in that one school time. This is terrifying. Now, I've been here for fourteen years, and I write a lot of, I write a lot of tickets. I don't want to write a lot of tickets, but it's a lot of people doing crazy things. But in Mossy Creek Middle School, in front of the school, there are five-hundred-and-twelve cars in one eight-hour period that travel more than eleven miles over the posted speed. Five-hundred-and-twelve. So Tucker Elementary had a hundred-and-fifty-eight on Tucker. That's a, that's a, a super congested area with, with, they had one of the largest number of kids who commute to school on bicycles in anywhere in the state. Um, just real scary, uh, Westfield had two-hundred-and-forty-five on Forty-One South, which I'm sure is no surprise to some. Uh, Perry Middle School was three-sixteen, Perry High School was three-hundred-and-fifty. Uh, Morningside Elementary on Morningside Drive was three-hundred-and-sixty-five near the hospital. There's a lot, a lot of traffic that goes in and out of the hospital for services rendered by our employees. I don't believe writing super-expensive citations is going to change the problem. What I do believe, when you do studies, or there have been studies that NHTSA did, that ask people why they speed, there's a certain sense of anonymity, there's a certain sense of not getting caught. The idea, it's not that people are, they don't care about kids, it's just that they're, they're doing other things. Cognitively, they're driving that car, but they're not really paying attention to what they're doing. There's a couple of things that RedSpeed does, and one of the reasons Governor Gilmore signed this into law, it didn't get a lot of attention because in two thousand and eighteen is when we also lobbied for the distracted driving hands-free law, and that got all the attention. House Bill, uh, nine-seventy-eight, which is what this falls under, and I have, we have a package for anybody that wants one that's got more than you'll ever want to know about camera enforcement in the state of Georgia. It's got all kinds of data and stats and stuff that goes into it. But the legislature, if you've ever been there, um, not everyone agrees under that Capitol up in Atlanta. So there's a lot of spirit and debate that goes into it. It has put some provisions inside of that, that modification for the enforcement for cameras that they learned, we learned in the state of Georgia. Georgia used to be a state that allowed you to write citations for cameras on red lights. There's no buy-in from the community, it just looks like a revenue-generating activity. So the legislators in House Bill nine-seventy-eight said the maximum fine for the first will be seventy-five dollars. It also said that it's a civil violation, not a criminal violation, which means that there's no points for your driver's license. So every fine that's issued under these cameras will not have points on it. It also will not affect that driver individually, it goes to the registration of the vehicle. The second fine, and, uh, hopefully not, but additional fines, the maximum fine is a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. The way that it works is that RedSpeed actually records it, they review it, they send it to our department, we review it, make sure that it's enforceable, that it's clear, there's no question to it, it goes back to RedSpeed, and then they do the billing process, they actually send out the citation, and my understanding is they may even send a link to the video, or that person is allowed to come to the video and they can watch the video without it ever even congested up court. A lot of people, um, there's, there's a buy-in to it, there's a moral argument to protecting our children. There's another feature that RedSpeed has, just real quick, Chief, don't kick me out just a minute, because I've talked for eleven, but, um, there's a feature to it that's a license plate reader that is unique to RedSpeed. Every one of those school camera systems that are measuring speed also has the ability to do real-time video and license plate reading. From a law enforcement standpoint, um, not to get buried in detail, but we have had several high-profile crimes recently that if this system was in place, the suspect leaving the scene of the crime would have been called on video with their tag number and a video of who was in the vehicle. It's, it's a little far out, it's kind of amazing to think that that's available. The other thing that if we had an incident where someone made threats against the school, so we had a student who unfortunately made some mistakes, said, "I'm gonna come back and do this, this, or this," with this system, we would actually have the ability to put every tag number associated with that student, all their parents' tags and everything, into a system that will send an alert to the police department if that tag is read inside the perimeter of that school. Um, it is a unbelievable, um, highly advanced technological, um, tool that we can use at the police department to not only change drivers' behaviors, but also put in some other safety features that we can do at the school. I did speak to, uh, an agency earlier today in Maryland. Maryland has a similar law when it's talking about camera enforcement for speed in school zones. The sergeant that I spoke to there today said that when they first implemented, they've had it implemented with this company for about eight, nine years. When they first did it, they averaged about a hundred tickets a day in their school zone. Now, they average about twenty to thirty, because it literally changed the driving culture of people, especially who live there, because not only, and, and it actually has the diagram, but it has a sign that says, "Hey, school zone, enforcement cameras." And then, according to the state law, five hundred yards down the road, then you have another sign that I believe is, is visible, that blinks, telling you, "This is your speed, this is what you're doing." And then, five hundred feet down, there's the actual camera system. So they've actually traveled past two points of warnings before they actually get to the point that reads their, their tag. But we all know that anonymity is one of the contributing factors, if you know that someone is monitoring what you're doing, you can change that behavior. That really is all citations are for. They're not really designed to be curative, they're designed to modify behavior. Because if I can get voluntary compliance, I don't have to write a ticket. If people slow down in school zones, everyone wins, we're all safe, and our kids are good. But if, if not, then we face with, I mean, we just let a crash on the interstate with a semi, a box truck in another part that was underneath it, everybody's okay from it, but, um, I didn't investigate it, but I promise you speed was a contributing factor. Our people trying to share the same space, so, Chief.
Thank you, Sergeant Nixon. Couple of little points I want to cover right quick, and then we'll take any questions that you have. Uh, like a point on video, this doesn't cost the city anything. How they make money is this sixty-five for the city, thirty-five for the company, split, and they provide all the equipment. If the city was to go out and buy this kind of equipment, which we have actually requested some similar equipment in, in budgets, you know, things that would video and count and all that, it's tens of thousands of dollars of equipment. And one of the points, uh, it only enforces speed during school zones, but we have twenty-four seven access to the cameras and the LPL. Now, you may remember, well, some of y'all were on the council, but several years ago, we bought a big amount of license plate reader system. I think we paid twenty-three thousand dollars for that. This only, you know, it runs, so it's wherever it is. These would sit there and passively run tags twenty-four hours a day and send us alerts if there's something that we've entered that's, that's being looked for. If an amber alert comes out, then it scans for that. So, um, so that's important, there's no points on the driver's license, so it's, it's a civil thing, but if somebody contests, they still have the right to come to court and, and be heard. And that would come to our municipal, uh, for what we're being told by both the users of the system and the sellers of the system, that that's a pretty rare occurrence, because it's irrefutable because of the tag and the, the video. So, let's see, for us, it acts as a force multiplier because we've got seven school zones. We had the study, GOD has, GDOT has to approve the sites, and all seven of ours qualify by GDOT respects. So, if I was to set out and monitor seven school zones tomorrow, not schools in session, but if it was, uh, we don't have, we don't have enough patrol officers on the road to do that in extra calls. It's just, you know, that's an impossibility. And this gives us the ability to do it morning and afternoon for school zones five days a week, without having to take a resource and send them over to do it, so, uh, pretty, uh, impressive there. And then I think probably the final thing that I want to, want to say to you is, so the funds, as I said, have to be dedicated to law enforcement, public safety. The funds are under the, the authority and control of the local governing body, which is y'all. Uh, and in some places, you know, they mentioned body cams and, uh...
That's right.
And what?
That's right.
Yeah. And so, you know, like, speed signs and new traffic cams would fall per- perfectly in there. Uh, one jurisdiction though, they use money, money to buy, to build sidewalks in an area that didn't have sidewalks, because that was a public safety initiative to give pedestrians a safer way to travel. So I think a lot of that is limited to our imagination and y'all's imagination as to what we can use that fund for. And of course, you know, we're not in the revenue-generating business, like Sergeant Nixon said, this is an appliance, uh, and safety thing. So it makes the area the school zones, it will make them safer, uh, for one of our most precious commodities, which is the children. So I think that's what I want to say. Uh, one more thing, they, there's, there's an agreement that the city would have to sign, that I could sign, and the chief of police, whoever y'all designate. And some cities enact their own municipal ordinance, it's not required, but they, some do, and so we've got, uh, samples of both of those that if y'all wish to incorporate the sentencing cities are included. And, uh, other than that, what questions do you have?
Make sure I understand the process. So first, in speed, and the tag, picture the tag is taken, it's uploaded to you all.
No, it actually goes, uh, it's, it's all cloud-based.
Okay.
So the cloud-based system goes to the home base for RedSpeed, this, this host station, I suppose, that. They're, they're one of, actually, they're the only ones in Georgia who've already received a permit from GDOT.
Okay.
Um, one thing that's a little different, Robert, with this one, is that, um, normally the Department of Public Safety, GSP, handles all the speed regulations for the state. They do, you know, licensing for speed enforcement on different roads, but under this provision, they wanted to take it away from the enforcement because of, and so, the Georgia Department of Transportation is the deciding factor of whether or not they can implement. So, so what happens is that, that violation occurs, it's cloud-based to their, their headquarters, and I don't remember right off what city that's in, they have screeners who go through, and they verify that the GCIC record on the tag matches the make, model, and color of the car. So there's a first screening. In order for it to be effective, it's come to the police department, and then someone in jurisdiction there does the same. They have to go through and monitor, and the sergeant I talked to up in Maryland, he was like, "At first, that was daunting, because it was just this massive amount of violations." He's now, you know, twenty, I bet. So it's, it's much, much simpler. But you have to look at it, you verify it, and then you decide one of two things, is it enforceable or not enforceable? If it's not enforceable, there are no questions, you're still not enforceable, and then it goes away and it times out, the video times out. If it's enforceable, it goes into an archive for prosecution, uh, as well as for, you know, court procedures, and it also gives us the ability to show that violator, if they want to come, because it may not be that person owns the car, maybe their child or someone who borrowed their car, it gives them a chance to look at the video and go, "Oh yeah, they gotta be responsible for this."
Alright.
So, so that's when, so we have that access the whole time, but it, we, it doesn't require any server or database on our behalf, it's all cloud-based through their host stations.
And we would do a thirty-day period where it's just warnings.
Right.
They still get it, and they say, you know, like, "Congratulations, we won't write tickets today," as you speak. And they say, "You can get as much as like a twenty percent reduction just from that, you know, just from that one, okay, you know, you can get a ticket for that."
But you, you don't have the, the ability for a driver identification, or it says you could tell who's in the car, and typically, with things I've seen, that's pretty hard to do.
It, it is, it's, so the, um, House Bill nine-seventy-eight took away that concern, because that was one of the concerns with the red lights. Because red lights are only, if you get a red light ticket, it just feels like they want money, because there are delays in red lights and stuff. With this, what they did is that they separated, and it's a civil action as opposed to a criminal. So they took away the points, they took away the identification for the driver, there's no adverse effect on insurance. Um, it literally is just, and it is designed, the, the fine of seventy-five dollars is designed to put enough steam that you go, "Hey, this isn't good, but not be cost of prohibited," so you don't put as huge on individuals. But citation, you're right, goes to the registered owner of the vehicle. And then the only adverse effect that that UTC did not pay is that it goes to the Department, Georgia Department of Revenue, then becomes the, the caller of that, of that fine, because you can't re-register your vehicle when it comes up that year, without taking care of that, that violation.
Another question is that, uh, understanding is that, uh, this law only could affect within the school zone?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Only during the times the school's in session, no holidays, no weekends, no summer times, just totally on, and, and we supply that information to the companies that they load it in, so it, it becomes operational at a certain time in the morning, stops at a certain time later in the morning, starts again in the afternoon, stops again.
Well, but it would, if, if school's in session, it would run the whole time, according to the slide I prepared.
Yes, well, it does.
It's from seven, it's an hour before, an hour after.
Yes, sir.
From seven-thirty in the morning till four-thirty in the afternoon, you're gonna be monitoring.
Right. Well, what it does, uh, which I'll put is that, it actually, um, school zones, you're in a high-congestion area, there's a state law that allows you to reduce the speed in that timeframe. That's why I have those signs that say from seven-thirty, eight-thirty, in front of Perry Middle School, it's forty-five miles an hour. So there's a school law that's on the book in Georgia that says when school's in session, there is some guidelines that, that don't apply to that, the regular speed. So, but if you're going, um, ten over the posted speed limit, then that speed limit will change. So the technology inside of these cameras is that from seven-thirty to eight-thirty in front of Perry Middle School is forty-five.
Right.
So at fifty-five, you're eligible for a citation. At eight-thirty, when it goes back to the fifty-five, then it's at sixty-five. So it adjusts to the school rate.
Yeah, but I'm saying you still, or you have the full...
Yes, that's right.
And I, and what I made them dispose, I meant from lower speed limits, Sergeant, during those specifications.
Right.
And then it gives us somebody around regular rate all the rest of the time.
Right. So if it's a twenty-five, then at ten over, thirty-five, that's when it can be, there's still a...
Yeah, they, they still would do a ten, the legislature's left a ten-dollar or a ten mile per hour gap for all. Uh, ironically enough, forty-nine six, one forty-one, our speed only applies to municipalities and sheriff deputies for ten over, but state troopers and state officers can write you at one over. They can write you at seventy-one on the interstate. Police officers and deputies have to wait for ten over if they're using equipment. If they're pacing you, they can do one over. However, it's, it's just, but they took that out because GDOT now is in charge of this and not the Department of Public Safety.
Chief, uh, in your department, how many additional employees would you need to be with?
I don't think we'd need that. I don't believe we'd need that.
Say it one more time.
I don't think we'd need that.
Are you kind of asking for any, how about that?
If I say ask you, you're trying to get it, okay. Not for that task, and I'm not saying I want to ask you for any, for any...
No, I'm talking about for this particular task.
What other questions or concerns do you have at this time?
If we said, uh, how long would it take, but can we get all the... But you have the map of twenty, some of our commuters from Georgia have signed up in the last few months, um, we would, they've already done the study, uh, they would buy the GDOT, get the formal approval, and then we scheduled it, install the hardware. When we talked to them, uh, initially, I think they said about ninety days from the time all that happens, so it would be, it would be mid-fall. And like I said, we have packets, I'm impressed for everyone of y'all, that, that there's a presentation with GDOT in there, uh, there's one about the law in there, and, I mean, a ton of stuff, so...
Just more your thoughts on this as we move forward? Any thoughts to be added?
Mine, I'm sorry. Well, I, I think the primary thing, just like with the red lights, you know, if you are willing to take post-creepment of the fact they were popped on camera in a school zone and they got a fine and a ticket. Yeah, I mean, I think the concept is fine, and I think that the school zones is a very good deal, you got the legal backup with it, uh, the, uh, additional income, I think, is beneficial as to how it can be used, but you still can have people coming in and saying, "You're just doing this to raise money." Uh, I think you can counter that with the safety of the school zones, but you're still gonna have, you know, some of it. Now, I, I do have one question, though. If council says to go with this, are they, is, is RedSpeed...
Yes, sir.
Is RedSpeed gonna require all those school locations done?
We can, they all qualify under GDOT standards. We could choose to not do all set of them, but it doesn't cost us any money or money if we do want to do so.
Right.
And if we only said one, they might say, "Well, it's not worth it, I don't like that."
The only reason I bring that up is that you may want to try...
One, though.
Yeah, you know, like, for example, uh, you say, "Okay, fine, we want to try out at the elementary schools." See what I mean, and see what happens there. Or you may want to do, uh, Tucker and Morningside, see, I mean, you stay off the state roads and all that type of stuff right now. Because if we go, if we go at the middle school and the high school, then we're coming on forty-one, which doesn't mean we shouldn't, I don't mean that, but there's any traffic volume on that, you also, the middle school may have, uh, Perry Parkway. There's any traffic volume on that, you also, the middle school may have Perry Parkway. You as well. If you do, at Arthur, you know, you're going to be dealing with state road one-twenty-seven.
Out of the middle speed, you may go on three forty-one, because that is three forty-one.
Right.
They did not mention one thing that is required from red speed as well as the House Bill nine seventy-eight, is that it has to have local support from the superintendent of the school system. They sign off on the same.
Well, I would hope that we would do that.
Right, well, yes, sir.
It's actually.
It'd be easy for y'all, they, they weren't.
We just haven't gone that step because we don't know, you know, how many of y'all were to do it in this.
I know, I think you would be, in some schools and a lot of, you would save yourself up for your targeting area.
That's very true. And during our area, covering our particular culture, whatever the case may be.
But there's not, my understanding is in the contract, either party can terminate if it's not working, there's other satisfaction. I would leave that to the city attorney's office to verify. And I can send you that by email, but I've got a paper copy of it. My understanding from our conversations with them is that if it's not working out for either side, we terminate. Of course, they don't have the policies to free the equipment, install it. But they said, you know, if it doesn't work out, we'll take the equipment out and install it another view.
I want to make you a question when I come over here. Who decides, like you just mentioned with one side and Parker, I think, one school there, we're going to decide to come up and then do we decide that of who's side? You know, it's like, you just asked a question.
If you.
The camera.
If you weren't going to do all of the DOT approved sites, which I understand are all our schools.
Right.
Okay? You would make the determination, because you're the governing authority.
I don't think we're going to vote. Something like that. I don't think you can, you have policy with the.
No, we wouldn't vote tonight, or we might not even vote tomorrow night. You might want to wait till you have the chance to read the information that the sergeant has for us, understand what the state law is, and then, and think about the impact it could have, you know, on your community. And you might want to talk to constituents about it as to.
No, no city in Georgia already has it.
They're, they're having that, so they're in process.
They're in process, but nobody's option. I don't think anything's operational because most of them work toward the end of the school year. They might do it in some places, but the school year hasn't come back yet.
Right. And, and GDOT just got the first permits approved through their legal process, because this is, it literally went into effect July one, two thousand and eighteen, when the Street Drive bill. The nine seventy-eight, if you actually, we'll give you, I mean, you'd more than happy to get a copy of it. If you read the whole bill, it's about sixteen pages, there's five hundred and nine lines to it. But if you read those five hundred and nine lines, it actually starts off with camera enforcement for school buses, which that company does already and has been super successful with. The next part of that was camera enforcement with speed in the school zones, so they're all part of the same bill. So if you read that and you see it, it's, it's all about the same thing. And I can tell you, the only reason Governor Deal signed it, it was championed by a family of a pedestrian on a bicycle who was killed in a zone that had reduced speed. And that was kind of the, it's kind of the Street Drive, the nurses out of state for those families lobbied that really hard and were able to get the hands pretty long past. But I would, I will tell you, just from a, my professional opinion from law enforcement, speed is a huge issue, and I genuinely believe this is one of the least invasive way that we could actually do without interrupting the entire. Because if we go into a school with five or six officers, or we're pulling cars over, the negative impact on that and the scare factor of a whole bunch of blue lights going on in the school zone, they call, they call the school and go, what's going on at school? I saw four patrol cars outside with blue lights on. So in order for us to pay the same voluntary compliance from enforcement, it would actually be maybe a little bit more disturbing to the school day. But I really think it's, I, I actually would love to see us get to the point where this goes in, you know, a couple of years, this red speed comes in and goes, look, guy got no speeders for us to justify this equipment anymore. How cool would that be if we actually reduced our violators down to the point that it wouldn't be economically viable for a company in the state here? So I do think personally, it's a, it is a really good move, and it sends a really powerful message because Perry would be on a cutting edge in the state of Georgia with a law that's a hundred percent true.
I mean, I think the county already might be by the grace of the issues that we're trying to protect your kids. I think, I don't think it's any more difficult than that or anything.
But don't get me wrong, I mean, we were, I'm just asking questions because we did diligently with all the lightings that we put out there on Morningside and the warnings we put out there, the warnings we put at Westfield, you know, because we were very conscious of this as a serious problem. And the only thing I'm saying is that we typically never vote or, you know, come to concurrence on stuff like that, especially as detailed as this one is. And so, I can't speak for the council, but I would think that if we had some period of time to review the information and then come back together and inform, seeing how this is the first time we've seen it. And it is an outstanding presentation.
We've got lovely party history.
I'm not speaking for the council.
I know, but you, you're right, you might not be fit for that. To get that we need to get information, to be informed. We don't need to make a decision without being informed.
And I have some extra, Brooke, I have you all over there.
Yeah.
Like firsthand, does he give you a view? Uh, I got one, but it. Yes, it should be with the state and the nineteen municipalities that are already in the process with. It should be in the issue. As well as the, it doesn't have the entire house bill printed out for each one, but we're more happy to send those to you. And then I can actually go through and show you the lineages that kind of says what it says on the little breakdown.
Because they do like to. Sixty-five years long and they're about barbecue and it's about thirty-five pages. Half the page is related to this particular thing. The rest of it is the school buses, which, I don't know if House County does do that or not, but that's what people are illegal. We pass school buses, works the same, and like I said, good counties do it.
Every school bus in good county.
Every school.
They're filled with cameras.
And I think it's imperative that we partner with the school board. They, they understand what we're doing, because we will have an impact on, you know, the folks still in, who in front of schools.
Sure. And after talking with Philmore, I didn't want to reach out to talk to him.
Oh, no, I agree.
Until, you know, because y'all might have said, heck, no, I mean, you know. So, this was the next, we already had the company do the, the study, see what they thought. And I suppose, I mean, we were surprised by the results.
Ms. Gilmore, I'd recommend that you put this back on the agenda for the first meeting and first August work session in August. So if there's additional questions, then you can move it to the first meeting in August for both the councils. So, prepared to do that.
And if there's something that piques your interest somewhere, or a question you have, feel email us, we will research and get back to you.
I would hope that's part of the whole dialogue over the next couple of weeks that, you know, that people have questions. They'll come to the pit of you and ask those questions and get clarification.
And we've given you lots of information. Hopefully it's mostly covered, that doesn't mean it will cover every question you have, so.
That's what most people say, it doesn't cover the questions I ask.
I'm the same way, you know, I'm like, well, what about this or what about that? And they're like, eh, you didn't talk about that.
Well, thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Well, thank y'all for.
For this, I, thank you.
Permission, thank you. Just in time for you.
I am for council member items. Mr. Jackson, anything to say? Mr. Jones?
What I, for the August fifth work session, I, same as my open house at Westfield, which is a teacher I'm required to be at. So I wanted to see if we've done in the past, sometimes I remove work session items to the pre-council in the next day. So I'm going to see if that would be a possibility for us through, as I know. Yeah, I want to see if that'd be possible.
Your pleasure, council. You basically canceled the August the fifth meeting.
We got so much we think of it.
That's my concern.
We got, you know, you know, if we got a pair load, we might not be able to cancel the good. Something we got to fill.
So your pleasure is to have your work session as scheduled, and Mr. Jones can catch up.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm fine with that. I just, I didn't want there to be quorum issues was my only concern.
I don't think there'll be a quorum issue, so.
Okay.
They good note to you, you know.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I'd like, I didn't want to, with you being potentially that situation, I didn't want to hamper anyone, that's all.
Do you know something, Gregor?
I know exactly the issue, yeah.
I think we even have it.
Yeah, they were, okay.
But I appreciate you bringing it to the body.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Ms. Bonham-Briggs, do you have anything? Mr. King? Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have an issue with dogs at Food Friday trucks.
Food Truck Friday, yes.
Yeah, food, whatever, anyway, we don't want.
Yes, I, I know exactly the issue, yeah.
I know we ask people to be sure to clean up behind the dogs, but it's not happening. Finally found a city person that went to his truck and got a shovel, took care of the issue. But we just can't have dogs, especially big dogs, in the middle of us. If a kid stepped in, or mama steps in, or daddy steps in, other dogs step in, it's just, I just don't see if we can continue to let them come. I love dogs, and I would love to see them there because I enjoy it, but it's too, too costly.
We're going to run into a problem. Somebody's going to say, this is a service dog.
We can't.
So we got to figure out a way.
Service dog. We've got that, that's for all. Is it not?
King?
Service dogs?
Yes, sir.
But I think they would have to get in and, and there's no, I don't know there's any real standard for that, because some people say, well, this is my service dog, and it's just their dog coming in. I don't know any way to determine that.
I say, I, I know exactly what you're talking about, but I've been, I've been thinking about that myself as to how we can handle it, because there's so many dogs, and some people clean up and some people don't.
Well, this individual, you had happened, she didn't think about starting. I'll finish, she was embarrassed, and she just kept on walking.
Yeah, going back to policy, I think that, I don't know how we're going to be able to limit or stop people from bringing their dogs, but I think we need to maybe on spot or whatever, try to add something to let people know about that situation. I mean, because even that, the hairy part, we were going there, you know, people would bring their dogs. And we won't have a fatty foot in the house after, but that's a good point, that's what I live about. Dogs walking all over the place and doing their business, but then the individual who has the dogs should be responsible for taking care of that business, and the dogs do their business, you know what I mean? And that should be, you know, everybody knows what's going to happen, they should take care of that, you know what I mean?
Should, did.
I know.
Ms. Gilmore, would you guys look into the possibility of putting that, having cleanup stations for animals potentially downtown like we have at Center Park, or?
We already, we already talked about doing that, but I don't think that's going to correct the problem Mr. Hunt's talking about. Unless somebody else sees it, goes over and pulls them over there. As I understand, like on the example that Rodley gave, it's just an irresponsible pet owner. And, and there has been a considerable increase in the number of dogs coming to the front.
Yeah, there has been, no question about that.
And, and large of those too.
Yes.
Well, you know, I, I have been more concerned about the aggressiveness of the dogs in the crowds. That I've witnessed persons several times that we've had dogs go at each other pretty aggressively down there. I'm afraid somebody's going to get hurt, so.
I think just as much as there's some public awareness and you're facing the messages that.
I'll be fine, we'll try that as page one.
Yeah, that's, you know, hate to just completely ban them, but, you know, if we have to, we have to.
I tend to think that's what you're going to have to do, but we'll try the first that was.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any other items that you'd like to bring up?
I had another issue with speed and taking care of it. I ran over to Keith, I had a place on Keith, so he's on top of it, so don't worry about it.
Super. Give it to him.
Thank you. Ms. Gilmore, do you have any additional?
No, sir.
Ms. E.
Yes.
Thank you. I derive this department head and staff items. Ms. Keith? Mr. McMurray, anything?
Don't get hurt.
Ms. Pfister, anything additional?
Yes, sir.
Chief Lynn?
No, sir, thank you.
Chief Parker?
Nothing, sir.
Boy. Ms. Worthington, anything to say?
Nothing further, sir.
Ms. Harden?
Yes, I'll go.
Good.
Good evening, Mayor, President and Council. I just wanted to inform you that Grace and Grace Boutique is opening tomorrow next to the new Perry cleaners. That property has been vacant for almost two years, so her rehab looks great. They're very excited to be there. She'll also be eligible for the rural zone tax credits as well as the property owner. And I wanted to let you all know that the owner, Abby Ruiz, has expressed her sincere appreciation and gratitude to us in the city for our help on introducing her to the property owner for finding that location and for assistance on the process to get her fire marshal inspection and her certificate of occupancy to open. So she just wanted to say thank you and say we kind of done a small deal. That was wonderful.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Excuse me, nothing tonight, sir.
Ms. Myers, anything from, you look like you have several jobs tonight, so.
I wear several hats, but no, sir, not tonight, thank you.
You have nothing tonight, okay, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of real estate and personnel.
Go move.
Second.